iPad connecting. Oh, John.
Kelly.
Alderman Chevalier, you missed the Tiger King laser background.
Oh, really?
We're good, Linda? Okay. Uh, Smithville Board of Alder. There it goes, right in the middle. Smithville Board of Alderman Meeting is now called to order. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get to the consent agenda, I do have a proclamation. For today, actually, you know, the way our meeting's lined out, just so it is. Today is June fifteenth. It is. World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Smithville. This has been celebrated. This is the eighth annual World Elder Abuse. Uh, day. Um, I, Damian Bullen, Mayor of the City of Smithville, do hereby proclaim June fifteenth, twenty twenty one as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Smithville. Encourage all of our communities to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contributions to success and vitality in our country. We will provide a copy of this proclamation back to their groups, so they have it and appreciate what they're doing. To recognize that. First item on the, during the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mayor Kay is on tonight to receive.
Oh, okay. Kay's here for that. Awesome. So, okay, here is the proclamation. If I was in person, I'd be able to get that to you, but we will have you pick that up at, uh, City Hall.
Okay, can I pick that up tomorrow or Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And if you, if you, uh, let me know what, if Linda texts me, I can, we can go and grab a quick picture too and post it.
Okay. Uh, how about Thursday morning about, um, eleven?
I will try to make that work.
Okay.
Appreciate, appreciate it that you come and pick that up. And what you all are doing.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Alderman Server.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Sorry that somebody just joined, so it messed up my whole screen. Alright, thank you, Marv, second. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Alright, consent agenda passes. Next item is the committee reports. I was gonna have Alderman Kowalski give us a little bit of report from her MML trip she took. She has another commitment. We did have planning and zoning. Alderman Chevalier, you have a report?
Yeah, it was a pretty, um, pretty good, uh, meeting. We, um, had a couple of items which will be on our agenda this evening regarding the medical cannabis facility. And KCI storage, um, some of the changes they're gonna, um, add to or requesting to allow, um, short-term RV rentals. Um, additionally, I believe the permit for residential was twenty-eight. If I'm correct, so that is a, um, yeah, like you said earlier, it's not as high as it had, has been, but it's still, um. We're still got some growth coming.
Yep. And a lot of that's in pill, right? Like in your neighborhood and my neighborhood.
Yes, correct.
So. I'll finally have a complete sidewalk, uh, near my street. Uh, okay, city administrators report, Ms. Wagner, do you have anything to report?
Uh, just call your attention to the report in the packet. Just a couple of things I would call out on that. Number one, renovation is nearing the final stages. We are back at the front of the building and opening the public, open to the public from the front doors and serving people from that. Um, a few minor things to work through and that'll continue over the next few weeks as there are small, small items to finish. Would have loved to have been able to have been in board meeting room tonight, but it still houses a lot of files. We're waiting on some furniture to be delivered, so there are still some cabinets and files in the board meeting room. Uh, and so we will be ready to go for the meeting in July. That brings me to reminder that, um, there are no meetings till mid-July and that City Hall will be closed both the second and the sixth. And appreciate that, um, for the employees and observants of the Fourth of July. And other than that, unless there are questions, I really don't have anything else at this time.
I was so happy to see the dumpster gone from Main Street. People make a wide berth around that thing too when they're driving, so.
Yep, yep.
That means it's done. Eric's dumpster is gone. There's no, that Main Street dumpsters right now, so great, great work.
Yes.
Speaking of. I'm sorry, Mayor, can I add, um, if anyone is interested in the July eighth State of the Cities? Or the July twenty-second Westgate, please let me know.
Does anybody, uh, are we buying a table for State of the Cities?
I need two and then we'll buy a table.
Okay. Anyone interested? It's a great time. Alright, well, we'll hit you up. And then Westgate is where this time?
Uh, Kansas City, downtown.
That's a good meeting usually too, so. Um, we haven't had one in person for a long time. I think the last in-person one I went to was with Alderman Blumker.
I think the last one was the awards in the summer of, was that the last? No, there was.
Oh, for MML?
Yeah.
Westgate.
No, Westgate, no, that Westgate was the awards in Lee Summit, but there would have been a fall one after that. I don't think there was a spring one in twenty twenty.
No, yeah, we had, we had like, uh, we had one at, uh, Sugar Creek that we went to.
Yes, yes.
And then it was supposed to be like at, uh, North Kansas City and Riverside. I think all those started getting canceled. Uh, speaking of meeting dates, um. I have something on the, on July twentieth, which is supposed to be our next board meeting, uh. Or is anyone opposed to meeting on the nineteenth or the twenty-first? Verbally, the, either one of those is fine. I, I know it might be easier on staff to do the twenty-first, so they're not trying to arrest to get the agenda out, but we've got a month, a little more than a month. Anybody have a preference on date, or do you want me to just pick one?
Pick one.
Pick one, yeah, pick one.
Chevalier Atkins, you little, anybody?
Do whatever you feel the need to do.
Alright, twenty-first it is, sounds great. Seven twenty-one, we will be in the boardroom. We'll have cake. Let's, uh, make it an open house. Cakes with, uh, we'll have it outside on the patio. Geez, Cynthia, alright. I then want to have two working bathrooms.
We will have two working bathrooms that don't open into the board meeting room.
If you haven't been to City Hall yet, it's amazing difference. Yeah. Anyway.
Mayor, check in the calendar, I can't do the twenty-first.
You can't.
I don't mind listening if it's okay to everybody else.
Nineteenth.
Does nineteenth work for you?
Yeah, nineteenth, I'm good.
Alright, let's do the nineteenth then.
Is that okay for everybody else?
Alright, nineteenth it is. Kelly's not here, she can't say no, so. Alright, we'll do the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. I want to see you all in per, it, we, it's been a long time since we've been in the room. I know John and, uh, Jeff had been in there a couple times during COVID, but. It's been well, it, it was last, well, this board's never been together except for the retreat, but in that room, we haven't had a full meeting in there since February. Cause it's before, well, in, right before spring break, beginning of March last year.
And, and Mayor too, sorry to, um, kind of, uh. Down top of what you indicated, seriously, board, do come and, and visit, uh, before the twentieth because it's, it is very different and we're it's still a work in progress, but very pleased with the, the results.
Yeah. It's way more professional being able to go into a conference room instead of Cynthia's office for meetings with people. Any, anyway, moving on, number seven on the agenda. Alderman Server.
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine oh eight dash twenty-one fiscal year twenty-one budget amendment number six, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I think we just had an hour-long discussion on why we need to do this. Clerk, please, Carl.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Uledo.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Approval granted.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Sarver.
Aye.
Five zero.
Motion carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
In ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-one operating budget at one hundred ninety thousand dollars to the expenditure budget and two hundred forty thousand dollars to the revenue budget.
Before we get to your resolution, the next one, I want to give a shout out to, uh, it's probably Matt and Stephen Bolt, and I don't know who else was involved, but I saw the RFP already went out for the campground. And quick turnaround, that's awesome. Next is number eight, resolution nine twenty-six.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve our, the resolution nine twenty-six awarding bid twenty-one dash five. Raw water pump station, the valve vault, uh, zebra muscle control and Smith Forks pump station. Turban built contractors eat in the amount of two million nine hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred forty-five dollars.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor of approving resolution nine twenty-six, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Yay, we can finally get rid of some zebra rustles. Reduce them. We're not really getting rid of them, we're just reducing them. Next item on the agenda is number nine. Alderman Server.
Motion, uh, motion to approve resolution nine twenty-seven, special event permit, chamber backyard barbecue.
Thank you, do I have a second? Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Thank you. Any discussion? Does everybody have their rib recipes ready? Alright, all those in favor of approving resolution nine twenty-seven, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Staying.
Thank you. Next item, motion carries, next item on the, uh, so you got that right, Linda. Four zero one, okay. Next item on the agenda is number ten, resolution nine twenty-eight. Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I moved to approve resolution nine twenty-eight, temporary liquor license, chops barbecue and catering.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Alderman Server?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution nine twenty-eight, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no.
I abstain.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is resolution nine twenty-nine. Alderman Hartman.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution nine twenty-nine, authorizing use of Smith Forks Park to host a music festival.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Uledo?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution nine twenty-nine, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries, next item is number twelve. Fireworks display for White Iron Ridge. Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you, I moved to approve resolution nine thirty, the fireworks event display approval.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? This is for July eleventh, so it looks like we're getting fireworks the fourth day and the eleventh, two weeks apart, huh? All those in favor of approving resolution nine thirty, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is number thirteen, Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you, I moved to approve resolution nine thirty-one, the special event permit for Whiskey Walk.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Hartman. Are you on mute?
Oh, sorry, yes, I seconded, Mayor.
I was like, did my hearing just go out or did this not go? Then Linda looked at me funny, so then I knew it was, so, alright, uh, any discussion on this one? All those in favor approving resolution nine thirty-one, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next is number fourteen. Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you, I moved to approve, approve resolution nine thirty-two, the temporary liquor license for the Main Street District.
Thank you, uh, second, okay, Alderman Atkins, second. Hang on one second. Um. Linda, I just got a message from Dwayne that the dial-in number is not working. Just in time too, cause we're, that's the next one. Uh, let's finish this number nine thirty-two. All those in favor of resolution nine thirty-two, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries.
Did we, um, push this, um, this next resolution back a little bit?
Let me just call him real quick.
Okay.
I'll put you on mute for a second. Linda, he had, uh, four on the passcode instead of five, I think. So I don't know why, but. Yeah, uh, we can, uh, John, do you wanna? Adjust the agenda, or Linda, do we need a motion to adjust the agenda to skip over this one and then go to the next one, or you want us to wait?
Are we tabling it to later in the meeting, or are we postponing?
Yeah, I think we need to move it.
Let's just table it. Can I get a motion to table?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, um, table the, um. Resolution nine thirty-three, the special request, Smithville American Legion Post fifty-eight.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Sarver, second, I think. All is in favor of, uh, tabling, uh, nine thirty-three, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Alright, motion carries, we'll table that one. Uh, hang on one second. Alright, uh, that moves us on to number sixteen, then resolution nine thirty-four. Alderman Sarver.
Motion to approve resolution nine thirty-four, Mitchell's Greenhouse and Nurkri, Nursery Final Plant.
Thank you. Second.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor approving resolution nine thirty-four, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is number seventeen, resolution nine thirty-five, Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you, I moved to, I moved to approve resolution nine thirty-five, the medical marijuana cultivation and manufacturing site plan.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Alderman Server?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? The, I know, uh, Lee is on from the company, if you have any questions for him. Okay. All those approve resolution, approving resolution nine thirty-five, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is number eighteen, resolution nine thirty-six. Alderman Chevalier.
Thank you, I moved to approve resolution nine thirty-six, the KCI RV storage site plan.
Thank you, do I have a second? Alderman Sarver and Atkins are about a tie, so I'll go Sarver.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution nine thirty-six, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Looks like Dwayne has made it to the call. Is that you, sir? If you are, you're on mute. Alright, so we can go back to resolution nine thirty-three. Can I get a motion to approve resolution nine thirty-three, Alderman Chevalier?
Thank you, I moved to approve resolution nine thirty-three, the special request of Smithville American Legion Post fifty-eight.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Atkins. Mister Noddy there, you're on mute. I know you're wanting to have a public comment or address the board. Linda, do you have to do anything to unmute the phone line or no?
The only thing I can do is ask him to unmute and it's not working.
To unmute on a phone, you have to push star six.
Thank you. Dwayne, can you try hitting star six on your phone? There we go.
There we go.
Alright. You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, okay. Uh, I'm, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm Dwayne Nott. One five zero one nine, Green, Brunner Drive. Board member of the Smithville American Legion. I read it for two reasons tonight as they come before you. The first is to request a waiver of fees. Uh, for the American Legion's use of the stage at Fairage Park for the Smithville American Legion community band concert season. This is our ninth season bringing music to the community free of charge. Secondly, and more importantly. It has come to our attention that there have been remarks made to the Alderman and the Mayor, both in person and on social media, that have been misunderstood to have come from the American Legion. The Smithville American Legion and the National American Legion is comprised solely of the American Legion veteran members. The Sons of the American Legion. And the American Legion writers. Smith American Legion, five hundred thirty-eight members strong. At, uh, at that national level are not a part of any other group or organization.
So there it is, yeah.
Hello?
Yeah, your phone is cutting out pretty bad there.
Yeah. Uh, how about this? Is that better?
Yes, it's a lot better.
Your Smithville American, uh, Legion Post fifty-eight provides a meeting space for many organizations. To include the Red Cross. Veterans Administration, the Sons of the American, uh, Legion, the American Legion writers. The American Legion Auxiliary, the Smithville Chamber of Commerce, the Patriotic Pictures. Uh, who by the way, uh, still part of veterans today. Uh, the Department of COVID, considering B P for space. I look out to Columbus, the road, and I write that with this car.
Is it, is it just my computer or other people having a hard time hearing them? Oh, we lost them. Okay, um, well, I think. Maybe he'll dial back in. I know, Matt, I know you had, uh, staff comments and, and recommendation and staff report on this. Could you, uh? You have time to go over that real quick, course, please?
Yeah, so on this, uh, special request, this is not a staff recommendation. This is just bringing this request that was, um, based on the uh, facility use application policy procedures allows, um, any event organizer to request the board, um, fee of, fee to be waived, so. Um, this recommendation is, um, from the board, um, and, and not necessarily from staff, so.
So you're, it's more administrative that you gotta bring it to us, but you're not recommending that we waive the fees? Is that what you're saying?
Staff is bringing forward the re, request for review.
Yeah, bring requests.
Gotcha, thank you.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that. Um, I agree with staff. Um, I think we would be setting a precedent. If we were to waive one fee and, uh, not waive others, so I, I, I do, uh. Agree that we, we should not waive a fee for any organization.
Okay.
Alderman Hartman, I do want to clarify and make sure that the board does understand, because we've not had, had something come before us in a while. We do have some sponsorships and partnerships for other community organizations, um, that have been recognized. And so in those instances, we do have a list, the Chamber, the School District, et cetera, where we do waive the fees. This is a request to waive the fees for a different organization that's not on that list at this point in time, and that's what staff brings forward based on their request.
And I'm back in the meeting again.
Yeah.
And you should have a strong signal now.
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay, if I may continue. Anyway, I was going through a list of the many, uh, uh, philanthropic organizations and, and clubs and whatnot that the Legion provides a meeting space for at, at no cost, and there's many, many more. And while we provide meeting space for these organizations, members of these organizations do not speak for the Legion. Nor do any individual members of the Legion. All are welcome to use our facility and our expectation is that anything expressed by members of these organizations would be expressed appropriately. The Legion does not dictate what others may say or do in the public forum or in private communication. It has something to do with the Constitution and freedom of speech and so forth. Organizations holding separate charters, such as the Boy Scouts, the American Legion Auxiliary. Valor Ranch and others listed above are separate entities apart from the American Legion. Clarity of understanding is paramount here. Comments and views expressed by members at large of organizations holding separate charters do not represent or speak for the Smithville American Legion. The Smithville Sons of the American Legion or the Smithville American Legion writers. To be clear, the Smithville American Legion works closely with the American Legion Auxiliary and supports their programs, which include Memorial Day services, Girl State. Girl Scouts, flag display and other veteran community and patriotic activities. We work together for the common good, but we are distinctly separate from each other with separate charters. That being said, to our knowledge, there has been no member of the Smithville American Legion. That is, the Legion veteran members, the Sons of the American Legion or American Legion writers that have posted on social media or through personal remarks to or about the city, its staff or elected officials that are improper. If so, please bring such remarks to our attention and it will be addressed. Our charter does not allow for such actions on behalf of or under the name of the American Legion. As a point of information, over the past twelve months, the Smithville American Legion has donated to the community, the school. Veterans Organization and individual veterans. the school, veterans organization, and individual veterans, a total of $23,520 and $43.65 in the last 12 months. It's been a slow year for us due to COVID, and our numbers are usually much higher to this flowing back into the community. A partial list of activities and services we provide for the community, youth, and veterans follows. Uniformed Honor Guard Rifle Team as funeral detail, uniformed Color Guard Flag Presentations, Missouri Highway Patrol Youth Academy Scholarships. Uh, we provide at no cost electric wheelchairs and scooters and other equipment to all. College scholarships, Boy State scholarships, Scout Camp scholarships, Smithville American Legion Community Band, Clay County Veterans Court, graduation open houses, flag retirement ceremonies, family and school reunion space, wedding space, funeral space, bingo, music bingo, full-service kitchen, lounge, outdoor patios, smoke-free environment, high school activity fundraising, oratorical competition, Blue Star Memorial, 9/11 Memorial, quilts for veterans, and many, many more. Unlike other posts, our doors are open to the public, and all are welcome. If there is a need, as in the recent tornado or home fires, our Legion members are there with equipment and helping hands. Does anyone have any questions regarding what the Legion is made up of and who is a part of the Smithville American Legion?
I, I think you covered it, appreciate it. Um, any questions? For Mr. Not?
Sorry, sorry to be lengthy, but I wanted to make it pretty clear who the American Legion is and who is not a part of the American Legion per se under charter.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Uh, sir, I appreciate that as well. Um, it definitely helps to clarify um, for some folks that, that saw some of those postings and, and may have got misunderstood.
Well, I can understand how it would, because the words "American Legion" are included in the title of the organization, and it, it would be confusing. Uh, that's why it was necessary for me to clarify. And once again, I ask if, if uh, any untoward remarks are made by any member of the three uh, members of the American Legion families, please bring it to our attention. That's not what we do here, and it's not what we're about. Thank you so much for your time.
Alderman Atkins.
I for one respect and appreciate what the American Legion is, is doing consistently with Smithville. And I like the idea of bringing in some, some, some band concerts and try to motivate and uh, drum up business for the downtown.
Alderman Chevalier.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of uh, the city sponsoring this event, or these events. I think it brings stuff downtown, and I think um, it's a good cause.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll ring off now. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you so much.
Yep, no problem.
Thank.
Thank you. Um, any other discussion before we call for vote? Alright, um, Linda, can we do a roll call on this one, just to be sure? I mean, if, yeah, it's shorter board today, so just want to make sure.
Alderman Uledo.
Hi.
Alderman Sarver.
Hi.
Alderman Atkins.
Hi.
Alderman Hartman.
Hi.
I'm sorry, was that I?
Yes, I.
Now where'd I go? I lost my list. Uh, Alderman Chevalier.
Yes, it's me. Aye.
Five zero.
Alright, thank you for making that clear for me. Motion carries. Next is a public comment. Do we have any public comment? No? Awesome. Any new business? Well, we have a long break, and uh, I think everybody needs a little bit of a break. I appreciate everything. I hope you all get to enjoy some of the fireworks shows. It looks like we're gonna have two uh, here in town. So get out, see some fireworks, have a good 4th of July. Uh, come shopping in Smithville. Spend your money here. Help that sales tax dollars go up that uh, Steven so desperately wants that number to go up, so. Uh, appreciate it. If anybody's around uh, tomorrow and wants to enjoy a really entertaining meeting, we're talking about 92 Highway, you can shoot me some info if you need the details. We'll be at Senior Center around lunchtime. Um, it's always a good chat. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman Chevalier.
Yeah, um, I'm sorry, I, I missed something on um, the new business. Um, I was wanting to um, at some point in the near future, um, bring up, uh, talk about the neighborhood grant beautification programs that we had been talking about um, a little while ago, and um, see if we can um, flesh that out a little bit.
I think we're gonna have that as part of the budget discussion. Do you have a, I know we looked at Liberties a long time ago. Do you have any ideas on budget amount? Or do you just want Cynthia and staff to look some neighborhoods?
Yeah, I, I'd like to know what, what our options are, um, what's, what, what some neighborhood communities are doing, um, and just ways that we can go about it to improve and beautify our neighborhoods.
I think that kind of goes along with the discussion we had around parks and getting community involved and contributing some money on projects, right? So, I think it fits. It's loud. Anything, anyone else? Thank you, Alderman Chevalier.
Yeah, and then I'll go ahead and make the motion to um, adjourn.
Appreciate it. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of journeying, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. See y'all in a month. Good night.